We're going to begin this webinar right now. It's now exactly seven o'clock and we expect others to join us as they can. My name is Marilyn Varday and I'm a founding member of the Good Neighbor Steering Committee and I will be serving as host tonight for this evening's GNSC Candidates Forum. I welcome each of our candidates for mayor, Christina Strawbridge and Steve Young, and for city council, Tom Campbell, Trevor McKenzie and Terry Scott. And I welcome the public attending, all of you who take a great interest in our town. Thank you all for your participation. This forum was created independently by the Good Neighbor Steering Committee without any financial donation or other support from any outside source, individual, commercial or corporate. First, a word or two about the Good Neighbor Steering Committee's long history as a citizens' environmental watch group. A number of us founded the original group in 2000 when Valero purchased the Benicia refinery from ExxonMobil. Of that momentous ownership change, we said then, "A cloud of uncertainty is hanging over Benicia." We feel this uncertainty hanging over us now, 20 years later. Over 20 active years, our credibility has been earned by our persistent commitment to fact-finding and asking pertinent questions and to evidence-based persuasion and advocacy on behalf of the community for public health and safety and for a healthy environment. We've met many challenges. For the record, over the years, our members have participated in establishing the city's first Benicia Community Sustainability Commission as well as the city's Climate Action Plan. In 2003, we commented and legally challenged the EIR for the refinery's decades-long Valero Improvement Project, we refer to as VIP. In 2009, when Valero proposed further changes to their facility under the EIR, we went to bat to challenge their EIR addendum on procedural as well as substantive grounds. As a result, with pro bono legal counsel provided by local land use attorney Dana Dean, we negotiated a settlement agreement with Valero that provided approximately $14 million for environmental projects that support water and energy savings benefiting both the city and the community. In 2010, the city of Benicia became a party to the amended agreement, at which time, with dedicated settlement funds, the closed Mills Elementary School was transformed into Benicia Community Center. GNSC members have addressed various major planning and development proposals. From 2013 to 2016, we actively participated with Benetians for a Safe and Healthy Community to challenge and defeat Valero's proposed crude-by-rail project. Most recently, we initiated a second amendment to the settlement agreement that, as adopted, reallocated $1.4 million to four major projects selected by the GNSC for funding, including the Benicia Community Air Monitoring Program, for which a nonprofit has recently been established. This is the first time, though, that we're attempting, for the sake of public education, to host a Candidates Forum to spotlight certain issues of concern to the public regarding the future of our city, climate change, and the cities and communities' relationship to the refinery. I'm going to go over the protocols for the webinar. The webinar format we've chosen will not include interaction with the viewing audience or with me. This is not a debate. We've asked candidates to frame their answers to stand alone, representing their own thoughts on a topic. A candidate may refer to another's response, but not in the form of a rebuttal or rejoinder to anyone else's comments. As host, I will ask each candidate to respond to each question with an order established alphabetically. We will begin with mayoral candidates first and council candidates second. To be fair, I will rotate the order so that with each question posed, a different candidate will go first. All questions were drafted by the GNSC. All candidates and only the candidates were sent the questions in advance with background information for context. This was done to allow the candidates to study and prepare for tonight's forum. In the interest of time, I will not be reading the background info provided, but I will be announcing the topic areas for each question. Each candidate will have up to three minutes to answer and our co-host, Constance Butel, will be monitoring the time. She will be either raising a sign or saying, "30 seconds, please." The GNSC members and the webinar attendees will appreciate succinct and clear answers. We hope this evening's forum will be educational for the candidates and the viewing public alike. For the public's benefit, because we are especially concerned in this forum to discuss the cities and communities' health, safety and our future in relation to the Valero refinery, we thought it important and appropriate to remind candidates of the Conflict of Interest Rules and Advisories under the Political Reform Act dated August 2015 that is under jurisdiction of the State of California's Fair Political Practices Commission. I'm sure you're all aware. The Political Reform Act is for public interest. The Political Reform Act applies to all elected appointed officials and employees working for government at every level. The act states, and I quote, "In order to prevent a conflict of interest, a public official should: one, identify and fully disclose the financial interests that may cause a conflict; two, understand the different types of financial interests that may be the basis for a conflict; and three, consider whether the decisions affect on the official's financial interests is reasonably foreseeable and material." The act details these precautions. According to the FPPC, the act relies, and I think this is important, the act relies on individual citizens to monitor the decision-making of the elected and appointed representatives to identify whether they have a conflict of interest with respect to a specific decision. Much of the enforcement of the act's conflict of interest provision is based on citizens' complaints. In other words, you know, these are things that, I would say, help democracy, help people to be paying attention to their electeds. If elected, a key question is whether you would declare any conflict of interest, including perceived conflict of interest, in any decision-making that would specifically involve the Valero refinery. The public needs to know. And I'm not posing that question to any of you. I'm just stating that that is of interest. Topic area one. Air quality and PM2.5. And that's particulate matter at 2.5 microns, or let's say, PM2.5 or less, smaller. So here's question number one, and the first question goes to Christina. Because acute and chronic exposure to PM2.5 is a serious health risk, especially for children with developing lungs, the elderly and people with pre-existing health conditions, what responsibility will you take as an elected official to ensure that Benetians are well-informed of the multiple health risks associated to chronic exposures to toxic air pollution, including PM2.5?
This has been an incredible learning experience for me. I'd like to start going back to the essence of the question. And the question is responsibility that I will take. So before I get to answering the question, I'd like to start with that climate change is real. It is the existential problem, threat to all of us. What we have experienced this summer with the wind, the fires up in California locally. Just yesterday, the French Riviera reported 12 inches of rain in less than one evening, having massive mudslides, massive loss of life, just as climate change is moving through. Now more than ever, we all need to be environmentalists. And everyone that is watching this show, I'd like to believe, understands that we all need to be environmentalists. And just for everyone, I wanted to give the definition as defined by Merriam-Webster. What is the definition of an environmentalist? Supporting the goals of the environmental movement to improve and protect the quality of the natural environment through changes done through harmful activities. If elected, it is my responsibility, through ethical and political tools, to ensure that we do embrace how we can solve today's problems and tomorrow's environmental problems. I will understandably have community engagement, understand how we are doing with the environment, enhance the coalitions, and so that we are not only talking for the people of Benicia, but we are talking about all peoples in the world. When we start talking about PM2.5, we, as we have heard from everyone here, we're just not talking local. This is a global issue. In researching for this discussion, I started looking at what the Indian government was doing. The Indian government is faced with, as a third-world country, of understanding what are the cooking fuels and how do the cooking fuels vapors react with various water droplets and get in, as Tom Campbell had noted, through various parts, you know, through the nose, through the mouth, et cetera. They're looking at a massive problem and a massive solution on how to be able to measure 2.5, PM2.5. So 2.5 is a difficult problem, but the biggest issue that we have right now is we can have the alerts, which I think Steve had a great idea, as well as Trevor, of understanding how we can measure this or how we can monitor it. The issue is, how do we truly get that information out to the public? And I really do believe that the measurement aspect of it is the way that we are going to be able to communicate effectively with our local folks. As a council member, I think it's my obligation, will be my obligation, to engage with Valero significantly and how to bring down that particulate matter and be able to bring awareness to this issue at every one of the junctures of the steps within the Good Neighbor Steering Committee's plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to topic area two. And this topic involves developing relations between the city of Benicia and the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, which we refer to as BAAQMD, involving community air monitoring and public health concerns, and a question about Valero's property tax assessment. We're giving everybody five minutes because there are four parts and what I'm going to do is read each part to you separately so that we can distinguish between these parts. Is everybody in agreement with that?
What actions would you take to ensure the city and Valero cooperation agreements' terms are fulfilled? I think that we're going to have a new, obviously, we're going to have a new council. We're going to have a new mayor. We have the opportunity to hit the reset button. I don't think that we have to wait until there's another emergency to react quickly to understanding how we can partner better with Valero. I think that what we need to do is we need to start a different kind and different level of communications. That, I think, part of the issue that we've been having over the last number of years is there's a failure, as they say in the movie, "A Failure to Communicate." So I think that we need to be very firm and very understanding with them to understand how we can communicate better. I hate using the letters, but I think that the ISO brought us to the cooperation agreement. I'm not saying that we need one now, but I also think that we need to make it clear that we understand if there is a failure down the road, that that is a tool that we are willing to go and look at. So from an understanding of what will it take to continue to make the agreement positive, I think we need to understand how we can understand emergency preparedness, communications, coordination. It allows us to enhance our responses for accidental releases. We, as both Trevor and as Steve pointed out, we need to get the position filled at the fire department for the liaison role. And I think that we also need to suggest, and I'm suggesting that the Public Information Bank, the website that people can go to, that possibly could have the purple air on there, needs to be enhanced. I found it very difficult to click through the areas in the city to be able to find the Public Information Website Bank. And so I think that these are the things that I believe that from a new city council member I would be looking at is collaboration, cooperation, getting prepared early in the process.
Thank you. What will you do to ensure that the city's cooperation with the air district to fulfill the district's commitment in a reasonable timeframe to wholly fund, locate, establish and operate a community-based monitoring station in our neighborhood?
Well, first off, I found it, I think Trevor made the point or Tommy made the point. I can't believe that the school district did not want that site. I understand that there were issues, but nonetheless, I would think that you'd want to have as much protection and understanding on that site. So I understand also that the city staff is working on an alternate site and they're going to be coming back with a recommendation on the next site. I am deeply concerned that the county representative is not, obviously, a Benicia resident, but that he has never been to city council. He is not, Mr. Spurling has not suggested a contact with the community. He doesn't understand what is happening here. I think that we really need to ratchet up our communications and our outreach on a semi-annual or quarterly basis to be able to talk to them and say, "How do we get better representation on to that monitoring board to make sure that we have a key person that understands what is happening in a refinery town?"
Thank you. And on that note, would you consider, I guess you've answered that question.
No, I'd like to answer that question just a little more.
Would you consider having a council appointee to the district board meetings, you know, as an attendee and/or to the air board's stationary source committee meetings?
Yes, I think there should be one dedicated city council member that is appointed to the board. But in addition to that, I think we should have a rotating member of city council so that every one of the city council members gets access to and sees what is happening so that they have firsthand knowledge so that two-fifths of the council has direct understanding at any given time of what is happening at the BAAQMD.
Thank you. And now, the last part. What would you do to ensure that Valero pays its fair share of property tax? And it's fairly assessed?
Yes, I'm sorry. As Trevor pointed out, there is a Board of Equalization that we can appeal. I think that one of the things that has to happen is that, getting back to my first answer of the reset button, is I think the reason why they continue, they being Valero, continue every year to try to get a reassessment is that there's a conflict between the city and Valero. I think if we can eliminate that conflict and they want to be a good neighbor and fulfill their financial obligation, we depend on those finances. I think that as a reset with a new council, new mayor, that this is an opportunity for us to be sitting at that table and talking to them and having them understand that with the improvements that they've made on the property, the continual improvements that they make on that property, that we should be and they should be taxed at a fair property tax.
Topic area three. The air district's Regulation 12 Rule 15 required approved real-time fence line monitoring systems at all Bay Area refineries with reliable public reporting of raw data in real time. And we want to know about the status of Valero's compliance. So here are the questions, and we'll start with Tom Campbell. Good Science requires independent validation of data. Under the City of Benicia-Volero Cooperation Agreement, will you commit to asking for independent validation of raw data collected from fence line monitoring systems and for access to archived data for independent third-party review?
I kind of would put it into the world of Mark Twain. There are lies, there are great lies, and then there are statistics. So you can do anything with the data. I think we need to have third-party, independent third-party analysis of all the data clearly, which is clearly spelled out in the cooperation agreement. In addition to that, I think in the agreement, it clearly spelled out that there was going to be in the Second Amendment, a relationship between the Benicia Community Air Monitoring Program as well as the Good Neighbor Steering Committee to advance the opportunity for the collection of the raw data and then for an independent third-party to look at it. And that's why Valero had provided the funds in order to move forward with that. So I think that this dispute, as I looked at all the information that's online, goes back to 2015 with the BAAQMD and the refineries' understanding, what is the minimal detection of H2S? And these are things that I'm trying to get my head around, so I apologize if I misspeak. But understanding what those levels are and how to detect those levels are very difficult. So yes, I agree with the collection and the validation of that raw data. And two, I understand that we have to have the right kind of tools and technology that'll advance to, to make sure that the information that we get is calibrated properly across all of the monitors.
The topic area is about Valero's and the Port of Benicia's contributions to greenhouse gases and toxic emissions and the status of the reductions of those emissions to date and the city of Benicia's Climate Action Plan, which, in my opinion, this is to add one little tidbit here, needs updating. And so I'll get to the question. The public has a right to know the current level of greenhouse gas emissions and reductions achieved by Valero and the Port of Benicia. As called for under the Climate Action Plan, what will you do to encourage further emissions reductions, including greenhouse gases at the Valero refinery, including its port terminal operations and asphalt plant, as well as to encourage reduction of emissions resulting from Amport's shipping activity at the Port of Benicia?
I too took a look at the CAP and the emissions inventory and it indicated that approximately, and this is that old data before Trevor was able to bring that to us, that 20% of all the emissions, CO2 emissions, was attributed to Valero and to the Port of Benicia, which are regulated by state and federal agencies. I think that what we need to do is we need to sit down and talk to both Valero and to Amports and see what can we do to encourage the use of additional kinds of electric vehicles to move around the plant, more efficiencies within the office structure, more collaboration and cooperation as far as streamlining some of the filters that they are using. Valero has a very active capital improvements program that does regular replacement of inefficient equipment to maintain some new efficiencies out of that. I think that we need to be able to coordinate with them and also develop on the city side, utilize the former climate advisory director, if we had that, if I recall, someone to be as a liaison with them to understand what is being emitted into the air and how that can be measured. In addition to that, I think that we need to be working and encouraging Valero to create onsite energy. They have a large tract of land there. If they can start generating more of their electricity, they won't be using electricity that has lost along the power lines going through that so that downstream, the plants that are generating the energy that they're using are not putting more CO2 into the environment.
Important topic area because it deals with our future and global warming and what we can do about it locally in our own, you know, bailiwick and through our, what we can do through our council and advocacy. So this is the topic area. Perspectives on Current Changing Operating Conditions Among Bay Area Refineries. The Future of Valero Refinery in Benicia. State of California Climate Goals to Achieve Drastic GHG Reductions by 2050 to Bring About a Net-Zero Carbon Economy. And the city of Benicia's Response to a Recently-Published Research Report Titled, "Decommissioning California Refineries: Climate and Health Paths in an Oil State", a Communities for a Better Environment Report Dated July 2020, brand new, which proposes annually phased reductions at approximately 5% in refinery production capacity to meet state climate goals. So the question is, "Valero's stated intention is to be the last man standing among Bay Area refineries. Valero is committed to processing dirty or crude oil slates for gasoline, jet fuel and other products. What is your current level of concern about global warming and for reducing refinery emissions, including GHG, in relation to state targets to slow global warming and create a zero-carbon economy by 2050?" It's a big question. Terry Scott first.
All right. Well, first off, there's no doubt in my mind that Valero will continue to operate the Benicia refinery as long as it is a profitable business and can operate within an environmentally regulated world. Given that, we have to understand how we can partner together in order to solve some of these issues. We still drive, we still need our streets asphalted, we still use plastic bottles for ketchup and shampoo, et cetera. So this is the reality that we have to live with. So at this point, we have the symbiotic relationship that began back in the mid-'60s as the Humboldt refinery came into being. So we can't rewrite history. We have to look at how we look forward, as you pointed out, Marilyn. How do we rewrite legislation that continues to address safety and public concerns? I'm deeply concerned about global warming. It continues at a rapid pace. It is an undisputed scientific fact. You need to understand how fast that it is happening so that we can find tools to measure it quickly. And as Tom pointed out, get that diesel material that is kind of left out there and be able to measure that that's coming into the house that I have to clean every day. We have to establish more community committees on the council and be a partner with Valero and with Amports. And we have to have our regulators that are watching us, watching them. As far as zero carbon for 2050. So I Googled this and I found a couple of really interesting sites. And I went to the World Economic Forum that states, "A Zero Carbon 2050 is possible due in large part to the collapsing cost of renewable energy", which is one of the things that this council approved, the solar farm. Most sectors of the economy, they note, can be decarbonized in 10 years. However, the so-called harder-to-abate sectors, such as refineries, will be difficult to achieve a reduction in greenhouse gas as well as zero carbon as high costs are involved and we have not discovered any of the technologies that we will need in order to be able to deal with that. In order to have a carbon-zero refinery, we're going to need to have a forceful public policy. We're going to need to have new investment, strong regulatory and industry leadership. As a council member, I think, and why we're here and we're all debating this, what will I do? I will be there to listen and be there to understand. I think one of the things that this whole evening was about was about the council members and the mayoral candidates to understand what we don't know and how we can learn. And this is the process that will enable me to learn more so that I can be an effective member of the governmental.
It's so educational to have this level of discussion amongst you. And I don't think we've ever had that level of focus in this kind of way at a council meeting. Well, you wouldn't expect it at a council meeting because of all the rigmarole to get things on an agenda. But I really hope that we'll have more opportunity for public workshops so that people can come to understanding about these things and that you are involved with. Those levels of discussion would be extraordinary. And in these times with global warming, which we now feel so intimately with these fires, where we can't go outside, we can't, we are learning something every day about our own tolerance level for what this holds for us if we don't do things to address global warming and slow this down. And you've all contributed very important things to the discussion. I did hear some things that I could have commented on, me personally, from my reading and et cetera, but this just is the beginning. I'm hoping this will be an open opportunity to propose workshops, et cetera, where the public is involved and can come and learn more. But you set the stage and I'm glad that we took this risk, in a sense, for the Good Neighbor Steering Committee to host this. So I want to thank you very, very much for participating. We've had up to about 58 attendees. And we thank the public for hanging in there on these rather complicated subjects and focused commentary on Valero. And we believe that everyone should vote. You know, those of you who are attending, your vote is so important so that we hear your voice. And the council, I think we're very lucky to have the council slate candidates that are running. I'm very glad for this. The people running that will have fresh opportunity for these kinds of discussions. I just want to announce that we will I just want to announce that we will be, we've recorded this webinar, it will be available on YouTube. And Constance Butel may. Try to edit it so that we have the actual webinar as it progressed and then also each of you with your own. Responses to these questions and I would like to figure out a way to get our questions and the background information that we offered. Out to the public as well, and I'm sure it's possible. So we're, we did a pretty good job sticking to the time, it's now eight forty two. So on that note, I would like to close unless anybody has any questions that you think pertinent to. Wrap this, not, not, not any big statement, but if there's any question. And also I just would like to say, since some of you brought up about. The Benicia Community Air Monitoring Program, B camp. And the nonprofit that has been established and what we're doing and we will. Very much appreciate being able to tell you about that, we're very excited, it's, it's happening. So with that, I'd like to thank you and say good evening.